Put it on your speakers, please. Our President Jonathan is going to be a little bit late tonight, so you get me. Any staff and student recognitions? Okay. Number four, Whitnall High School Student Council report. Emma, your mother told me you got accepted to Marquette.
I did. Thank you. Alrighty, so hi everybody again. I'm Emma Peterson. I'm the Student Council President.
I'm Lomita Kukun. I'm the Student Council Secretary.
And I'm Sydney Reinhardt. I'm the Deputy Student Council Director.
Can you turn the mic on, please? Thank you.
Do you want to hit next in the slideshow, please? Yeah. Alrighty, so something we're super excited this year for Student Council is our member improvement. So we've seen an increase. Last year we had about 26 members and this year we have 47. And we have new members across the board, that being seniors, juniors, sophomores, and freshmen. We saw totally new kids, which is awesome for us. A lot of new, different opinions. And we, the thing that surprises me the most is we have a lot of freshmen, so that shows that the incoming kids are really excited about like issues and stuff that they can change or just help out with in the school community.
So what was the, what do you think the reason for an increase in membership is? Do you think it's because we kind of opened it up or because you advertise it a lot more?
I think it's kind of both. We opened up our parameters a little bit, as well as we, for the freshman orientation day, we had a room where every kid, all the freshmen were, and we kind of promoted Student Council and got them hyped up for the school year and stuff. And I think we saw a lot more participation with that.
I think from the, sorry, I think from the advisor end of things, I think it's very much so that we've just become a more like open club when it comes to, hey, you might not be on Student Council, but we're doing something like, you know, Emma or somebody, I don't know, who is going to talk about haunted hallways. If you want to help out, come help out. We've got some ground rules, we've got some things that you need to, meetings you need to be at, agreement form, but if you want to get involved, but you don't think that all of Student Council is your cup of tea, then I, I, I think we've, we've had a lot of success with that.
Oh yeah.
Like our, our numbers of kids helping out with just various activities that they feel interested in, and then saying, oh, you know what, like, I don't think planning a dance or something is, is really my interest, has been really cool. And then we get those kids emailing me the next year saying, hey, that was a lot of fun. Maybe I want to be on Student Council. So that's been really, really cool to see.
Awesome.
Yeah. Alrighty, we can go ahead to the next slide. Yeah.
You just hit the arrow key to the right. Yep.
Another thing that we really want to focus on this year is soliciting student concerns that aren't in Student Council. So recently we've been trying to figure out some ways that we can do that. And a couple of options that we have so far are an anonymous Google form that can be on the Whitnall website for students to just answer, like put any comments or concerns they have, and then for us to look at and see what we can do about it. Or we can also have open forums with the Student Council members and having people that aren't Student Council come to like one meeting a month and say anything that they would like to change or see. And we tried that last year and we didn't really have a great turnout, so we're going to see this year if that will be another option that we could try again. And then we're going to just keep continually asking the students around us what they feel about the things that we're doing and what they might want to change about it.
We have been having, like, I think I've only been on Student Council last year and this year, but I think one thing that we've been trying to actively do is to, instead of wait for kids to come to us, we go out and go to them to see what they want, just because, you know, we have a lot of trouble with people coming up to us and saying, hey, I don't like what you're doing. It's better, it's, there we get a better response when we say, hey, what do you think we can improve? And so we've been a lot better with, instead of coming to meetings, just like, everybody has one idea, everybody is kind of just like, we're on like the same page. We have people coming up with different ideas, saying, hey, kids in my grade said they don't want to do this, or, hey, the incoming freshmen said they did this in eighth grade, so we think we should approach this a different way. We've been a lot, we've been, been hearing a lot more responses now that we've been kind of encouraging the kids in our club to go out of their way instead of waiting for people to come to them. So last week was homecoming week, and, or the week before, the other week was homecoming week, and we have been, we're especially proud of it just because we've been trying to increase the amount of participation overall, and we've been seeing, we saw like a great jump of participation just even compared to last year. And we especially had a huge turnout for the homecoming dance, which was like way bigger than in previous years.
Yeah. And we also just have like an overall positive atmosphere this year and like a great participation, as Amelia said, like, we had a ton of new freshmen participating in the lunch games and we had a lot of just overall spirit and like unity that week, so that was a really great thing to see, especially with all of our hard work to see it like put out like that, it was just amazing. And then the pep rally and the parade went extremely smoothly this year, and I feel like we've really gotten a lot of the kinks out of the way since we've started to take it over and it's been going really well. And then this year we also added something new to the pep rally. We had the fall captains speak about how their sport went this last season or how it is going, and we found that that was very successful and that the kids were really interested in hearing from the captains instead of the coaches or teachers how their sports were going. And I think that the captains really liked the opportunity to tell everyone about their sport. And I'm the captain of the tennis team and I felt like it was a great opportunity for me to tell everyone about a sport that some people don't really even know about or follow, and I feel like the students really like to hear about it.
Yeah, and then a new idea we have for the spring is kind of getting our eighth graders involved and ready for the homecoming season, since once they get into freshman year, they have so many changes going on, like academically, and then they jump right into homecoming week, you know? So we kind of want to prepare them for that and give them ways that they can get involved within our schools that we see that increase of involvement, because seeing that in the past year alone has been really great.
So now that we're finished with homecoming week, our next focus is going to be haunted hallways, which is on Wednesday, October 30th. That is our longest running Student Council run event, so we're all super excited about it. We have a lot of people outside of council, this is probably the most people I've ever seen coming to expressing interest in joining, which is super exciting. So we have like, just, we have the kids in council, but then like, I know almost everybody in council has had at least one or two people that they know are interested, so we, we plan on having like a large turnout, but also large participation. And then, so we're just really excited about that, so that's just what's next to come after.
Thank you all for your time.
Any questions for ladies? Well, thank you for coming. I think that the vibe that you're giving off to other students is really where, is seeing people are excited about it, and they're coming to you, and it's great that you're being proactive and, and selling. So if you don't succeed in your scholastics, maybe you can be salespeople. It's a good living. And me.
Is that a one or the other?
Thanks for your hard work on this. Thank you.
Alright, now we have reports. First being program reviews, art.
So we have three reports on program reviews tonight. Last year we went down a road of really talking a bit more in depth about some of our programs and kind of found ourselves in a position where we weren't always really fully understanding where the program had been, where we were headed, what we intended, and while we know we've got some good solid programming going on, we really wanted to provide the community with the opportunity to express, you know, what they understood about the program or appreciated about the programs. And so we had people engage, various stakeholders engaged in those program reviews last spring. So we had teachers and parents and administrators all partake in those, in those interviews done by an outside consulting firm. And the teachers over the summer and early this fall have come together to look over the data. They themselves participated in the survey and now they've looked over the data and really said, you know, so what kind of questions do we have around the data that we see? And they've come up with some of their own questions and some of their own ideas around those program reviews. So you're going to hear those three reports in quick succession, starting with art.
Quick introductions. I'm Amy Galhar. I teach at Hales Corners Elementary. I'll let them go down the line.
Annabelle Weeks, Edgerton Elementary.
I'm Jessica Scholz. I'm at the middle school.
I'm Courtney Nivani. I'm at the high school.
Nicole Tontoni. I teach at the high school and I teach kindergarten at HCE. Oh. Before we get started.
I just want to talk a little bit about the format of the presentation. So each group has about 10 minutes that they've prepared a presentation, and I'd like to thank all of the teachers and Lynn for their hard work over the summer and now for getting ready that information. And then after that, we'll take some questions before that if the board has any, but if they're ones that the team is going to have to sort of go back and discuss, rather than they can just answer off the top of their head, like how many, whatever. Lynn is going to be collecting those questions so we can get back, so rather than put people on the spot with something they may or may not have right in front of them in terms of that, but they're more than happy to answer questions that are specific that they might know just from their day-to-day operations. So that's sort of the format in terms of that. So after each, so you don't have to try to remember your questions at the very end, so we'll, after each group is done, if you have specific questions for that group that's up there, we can take them at that point, if that makes sense.
You can go to the next slide for our vision. I'm just going to read through it. The K-12 Whitnall Art Department strives to empower students to visually communicate their unique inner voice through a choice-based philosophy that values hands-on learning, exploration, creative problem-solving, and skill-building. So that's something that we came up with this summer after going through the review and coming up with the vision statement. And then on to the next slide. We were looking at what was working well according to all the stakeholders, and the first part of it, the, a lot of the, the big overarching things that we were trying to pick out, the school board feedback was that the staff was talented, excited, that we bring a lot of energy to the classroom. And then just to kind of piggyback off of that, there, one of the other comments was there wasn't enough known, but that would be later on that's coming to know more about what else the art department has to offer.
So for the art teacher feedback, we wanted to talk about the choice-based learning that we implemented starting in 2016. It's still going really strong and really well for us. With that brings very much a growth mindset. We value fostering creativity and problem-solving through that, which really is about a time for thinking versus a time for echoing and doing what the teacher does. And with that comes the ability to explore a lot of mediums, and we found in the data collection that 82% expressed that it was a top-three outcome that they wanted for the art program. You can go to the next slide.
Next four slides were just showing all the choice-based artwork and all the different ideas and mediums from a K-12 perspective. I think the first two slides are both elementary.
Elementary. Just to showcase that what we, what the students are producing is very much a choice and personalized way of expressing themselves, which is a reflection of our vision statement, and that you're not going to be seeing a lot of artwork that looks exactly the same based on what the teacher did. This is all student-led.
Then these are more middle school examples. Again, same philosophy, it's all the way through kindergarten through high school. And then the next slide would be the high school level.
And as far as the artwork, it's all choice-based, but as they progress to higher levels, it kind of becomes slightly more directed where they're practicing specific skills based on whatever course they're signed up for, but still given a wide range of choices within that.
Some of the areas of concern from the school board, a lot of the feedback was about having more avenues to show off student artwork. And then we noticed that a lot of people did not have a lot of experience to really know what concerns were about the program. And then our teacher feedback was that we would need more K-12 collaboration time to make it more of a cohesive program. Need to continue the positive momentum to kind of just keep doing a lot of what's already going on. Recruit to build student interest in offering medals every
Year instead of every other year, and then in adequate high school spaces to accommodate students' materials and classes. Do you want to add to that or no? So we have been doing and will continue to do things to advocate for our student voices for their, for their art, including at the elementary level, they have hallway displays. You see, so at Edgerton, they're having a big art show in December, art fundraiser, along with the third grade concert. And that HCE in May, there's a big fifth grade showcase where they can showcase their work from the year. At the middle school, again, hallway displays, they also take place in a youth art month exhibition along with the high school. That happens in March. And the students create a digital portfolio, so you can really track their progression as they move through their courses. At the high school, again, hallway and display cases, we have our students build a website of all of their work, so that all of the art classes that they take would be included. And then these are eventually published and available like at, at the art exhibitions. We use Twitter and Instagram. We have a showcase at the end of each semester to show off their work, and then of course the youth art month exhibition in March.
So moving on to additional data collected, we were looking at parent and student feedback, and they stated that they didn't feel as though there was enough art classes offered, and then they felt as though art classes were not supported or promoted. So some of our teacher proposed solutions to the data collected, what we did was we put together a survey, we sent it out to a certain number of schools, and six out of the seven districts that responded said that they do require foundations courses as a prerequisite at the high school level. We're looking to streamline the pathway from middle school to the high school by offering high school foundations courses, and possibly by bypassing that foundations course with use of a portfolio, if we all agree upon it. More displays of work produced to build awareness and advocacy, and then creating additional awareness around art department needs.
So some of our action plans to address the areas of concern include, again, in summary, new course proposals at the high school, and we'll have those in, we'll be presenting those in November to all of you. And then just more communication with parents so they know exactly what is going on and understand like the flow and sequence of the curriculum and, and our goal with, with the students' work regarding our vision, purpose, exhibitions, all of that.
And we'll continue to display artwork throughout the school year, which is going to be ongoing, obviously, and working with administration to find common collaboration time within the art department.
Any questions, Karen?
How did you know I'd have a question?
I'm going to get ready at you.
Can you tell me a little bit about what a foundations class is and how that would work? So that's a like level-one class at the high school, or when you're saying it streamlines from the middle school to the high school, how, what does that look like?
Well, it's like a transitional course, but basically we don't offer a course that gives them, like, allows them to explore 2D and 3D dimensional. We have a 2D class, we have a 3D class, but we don't have like a base level class. And I think the goal
Well, the goal behind having foundations classes, so they can get experience with more mediums and more types of art, so they can figure out like what they actually like. Because they might, they might come out of middle school thinking like, well, I only like drawing, well, they haven't really tried, you know, a lot of different mediums, so we want them to just have a overall experience with all the mediums before they move on. And then they'll have like the base level skills and understandings.
Or even if there's students that haven't taken art in middle school, if they decide to take art then in high school, then they'll have that, that foundation that they really need to build and work into the level-one and above art classes.
So you're thinking that that's happening at which school? At the
We would like to add that to the high school. That's what we're talking about.
John?
Because in the, in the classes in middle school and elementary school, at least in elementary school, you hit a variety of mediums there, right? So what you're saying is you want to have a class that hits a variety of mediums in high school in case there's students that, that decide to spark an interest in art, forgot what direction to go.
Right.
Do students have any say-so as to whether their art gets displayed?
Yes. They're, we require at the high school level anyway, they're required to take part in the showcase. So for example, they have to select three pieces that they like to display along with their QR code with their website and all of that.
Okay, so they have a, a choice as to what pieces are displayed, but not whether they have to display or not? You're saying they have to display?
We have had, yeah, I've never had an issue.
It's also one of the art standards. So if you're looking at the National Art Standards, that's create, respond, reflect, or, and present, present is one of them. So it's part of the standard, and a lot, like, I start in the, in the lower elementary grade levels. Like, we've been choosing, you know, in the, what fifth grade art show, you're, you're going, you're in charge of which ones going in the art show, because we want them to
Me being the student?
Yeah, the student, yeah. I, we definitely have conversations with them on, you know, like what we think would showcase your ability, but.
Okay, thanks. Kevin?
Yeah, Ed, would you mind just talking a little bit about overview of the metals class that you mentioned?
The metals class?
Yes.
So like you're asking what does
Like, what do you do in there? I mean, I have a general idea, but I'd like to hear an accurate description.
Well, it includes sculpture, like using wire form, for example, soldering different metals together, learning about how different metals respond to different manipulations. We make rings, jewelry, reliefs, working with foil, things like that.
Cool, thank you.
Steven?
Foundations class would be open to anybody at any grade level, not specifically for the freshman.
Correct.
Nancy?
No question, but I'm amazed at some of the artwork that, that I've seen from our students, and I think it's really good, especially, I was never very good at art myself, but I have to say that I still have art pieces that my son made, you know, many years ago that I still put out occasionally, so I think it's great, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Do you know that at the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, we have a convention here in Milwaukee in January, and they have an art show? Do you know that we can try and get pieces in? Do you know about that?
Does it keep up? That art can go in?
Yep. Well, we'll have to get you some information, because I've always looked at them and I'd never see ours, and maybe it's just communication, and it'd be nice to see some of our kids' stuff up. Can we take care of that?
We can take care of it.
Karen?
One more. So when you talk about offering medals every year instead of every other year, can you just add some color to that?
Well, I've only taught it the one time, the one year, but there's a lot of interest with students. And the problem came when it was offered last year, and I had it first and second semester, and so like second semester, for example, I had juniors taking it and they just loved it and they wanted, they want to take medals too. Well, it's only offered every other year. So I was coming into that and I had some concerns from students and parents about, well, now they can't take it as a senior, and they were really disappointed, so.
So you have a medals one and a medals two, and it's just coordinating between those levels and the timing that it's offered?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is each one two semesters or one semester?
Well, last year it was, it was just one semester of each, yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you, ladies, appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming on. Program review music.
Can I take the cable?
Cable taker.
They're going to, they're doing it.
Oh, Lynn asked whether I wanted to run from here. Okay, that is fine. Sure.
Do we need more chairs?
Okay.
Can I talk anyways?
Hi, everybody. My name's Michael Zenz. I'm a music teacher at the high school and at the middle school. We have the whole music team here tonight. This is Katie Sider, music teacher at the middle school. Caitlin Dahl, one of our new hires, elementary music at Edgerton. Jared Scholes, our other new hire, elementary instrumental at both elementary schools and also kindergarten, general music at HCE. And Eric Ash, music teacher at the middle school and at the high school. Also here tonight are Holly Dykstra, choir teacher at the middle school and the high school, and Monica Heckenberger, general music at HCE. So our, well, we are all relatively new to the district. Eric and Monica are the wily veterans of Whitnall with a whopping four years here, and we, we all have four or fewer years. But to the best of our knowledge, there wasn't a music department mission or vision statement in existence, so we worked this fall to put our minds together and think about what we value and what we think our role is in helping our, our students develop. So the, the vision statement that we came up with is, "The Whitnall School District Music Department will expose students to various genres of music through collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, and performance to develop the whole student's lifelong passion for music." And I'd just like to expand on that just a bit. Collaboration, we value that very strongly because we view music as one of the only opportunities in a child's school day where a lot of what they do is a collective, a collective goal that a number of students are working on together. If we're looking at our performances or our concerts, there's maybe 20 up to 45 students all working toward one common goal. Creativity, that means a number of things in music. That means students creating their own music, but that also means involving students in the conversation of how we are going to perform a piece of music, either in class or in a concert. Critical thinking, we, we try to encourage our students to evaluate their own personal performance and the group's performance, and think about ways that it can improve, and think about methods that we could use to improve it. And the performance piece, I think it's important to, to note that that means obviously public performance in, in terms of a concert, but that also can mean sharing music even in the music classroom. Obviously, students do a lot more public performing the older they get, but the, the doing of music is important from little on. Oh, and then the, the whole student's lifelong passion for music, we understand that not every student is going to go into music either as a, as a job or as, we hope that they will continue as a hobby, but we hope that each student leaves our, our program with the tools necessary to continue to be involved in music with, and have that be a meaningful part of their lives for, for the rest of their lives after Whitnall.
So just after we reviewed the data in August, we came up with what was working well, according to the data. So there was a consensus that it's a positive, caring, passionate, and engaged teachers. There's lots of district and community support for music, and students and other teaching staff liked the non-performing options at the high school level. And then as far as our feedback from the music teachers, there's collaboration between all the music teachers, and we also provide opportunities to extend learning beyond the classroom.
So some areas of concern according to the stakeholders, in terms of the instrumental music at the elementary school, stakeholders we noticed were looking to see additional opportunities at the elementary level. We feel that this was due to the timing of the, when it was sent out and with all the changes that were happening last year.
Another theme that we noticed in the program review had to do with the marching band element of the band program. The, for the past approximately decade and a half, the marching band element was extracurricular, and, and that seems to have penetrated pretty deeply, because a lot of the students and parents of current students replied to the survey saying that they do not feel that the marching band element should be required of all students in the high school band. Other respondents said that they do think that it should be a required element, and that, we noticed a lot of the, the people that do think that it should be required were in the community members category. Community members feel the marching band should function like it did in the 90s and 2000s, or like their own high school marching band experience, be that here at Whitnall or elsewhere.
Alright, another area of concern that we noticed in the program review was communication. Some people felt like they weren't aware of what was going on with the music department. And the final area was schedule and time. Some people felt like the scheduling, especially as students got older, it was hard for students to take as many elective classes as they wanted to, especially music classes.
And then on to teacher, music teacher feedback. Small group instruction is a new thing to Whitnall this year at the middle level. The question is, is there enough time in all of our schedules? The question is, is there enough time in all of our schedules to do it? And if, our concern is that maybe it should be part of the FTE and the schedule of the day and should be equitable among band, choir, and orchestra alike at the middle level. Oh, and then, fifth grade curriculum and schedule. As you know, the, the elementary instrumental music is part of, they get pulled out of general music class now to have that, their instrumental experience. And the, the question is about having, the fifth grade general music, students are never all together at one time in their class. There, it's always pulled out in an instrumental music.
All right, what actions will we take to address these areas of concern at the elementary instrumental music, being new to the district? Currently unsure if there are any actions, meetings take place at the moment. We plan to document everything that's going on and just see at the end of the year if there's any changes that we need to make.
With regard to the marching band, I already started gathering some additional data in terms of surveys of current students and families of current students, both to gauge student interest in various elements of the band program and also to gauge parent value, what they think is important for their child's high school band experience, and also to gauge how many additional performances parents think are reasonable for their child to participate in over the course of the school year. That is Eric.
As far as actions we're going to take relating to communication and awareness, we'd like to have additional visibility on the Whitnall School District website. We'd like to continue using our Whitnall Music Department Facebook page, increasing our posts on there so that we can share what we're doing with families and the community members. And then we'd like to continue direct emailing or IC messaging families relating to concerts and what we're doing in class and continuing to increase those messages. Oh, as far as scheduling, we'd like to identify and focus on key performances. I think this was especially targeted towards band with a lot of extracurricular performances for that. So picking out which performances students really need to be at for the year. And then we'd like to examine the school's schedule to, you know, increase the maximum amount of choices for students that they can take the most classes and the most electives as possible.
And then finally, with small group instruction at the middle level, we'd like to work with the administration to have optimal schedule opportunities for the students. They meet currently during the connect periods, which is working really great. We'd like them to be weekly, so we're hoping to look at that this year. And, like I said before, to have it be part of their everyday connect schedule. Again, band, orchestra, and choir teachers, we're looking to have it as part of their schedule in FTE. So we're hoping through our work with administration, we can work to make that happen. And the hope is that it would not be part of our eighteen student limit for a class because eighteen students in a small group instruction setting just isn't small group instruction anymore, but as part as minutes of the day of teaching.
All right, how we will evaluate these actions at the elementary instrumental music level. As I said, being new to the district, just evaluating all documentation taken throughout the year and to address any concerns that may arise from that and how we can improve.
With the marching band component, like I said, I'm already working on gathering data. I do have a lot of data from the students. The sample size from the parents isn't quite large enough to make any kind of informed decision yet, but continuing to encourage and remind those parents to, to give me their feedback on, on this element of the band program. And then once we have a, a complete set of data, share that data with administrators and, and work together to determine what the best path is going forward with regard to that component of the band.
All right, as far as awareness and communication, we'd like to continue monitoring our social media activity. And then we'd like to review and analyze stakeholder responses to our communication. So are they getting the communication that we're sending out and is it through the right pathways? Lastly, we'd like to continue monitoring our enrollment numbers with regard to scheduling to see if that's helping at all.
And, I know. Finally, with small group instruction, we're just gonna keep watching and check that all actions have been implemented. So that's all we have, and we just want to thank you all for being supportive of music at Whitnall as well. Thank you.
Nancy?
Yeah, so I didn't hear anything about pep band, is that not a thing anymore or what?
No, no, we, we-
How does that fit in?
We do have pep band. We, we played pep band at all the home football games. If we end up hosting a, a home playoff game, we'll be there. And we do usually between eight, six and eight home basketball games, split evenly between girls and boys.
So is that required for certain groups?
It is, yes.
Okay.
There is, there is a little bit more flexibility with the, with the basketball games. The way I've done the basketball games the past couple of years, because there are just more of them. So if the band is at eight home basketball games, the student might have to choose four of those eight to participate in.
Steven?
With the small group instruction, you're talking at the middle school of doing band, orchestra, and chorus with that. Is there enough space to do all this on a weekly basis and where do you guys do that?
It's in our classrooms during connect time and we don't have a connect, so the students come from their connect class to us.
Okay.
Kevin?
Just thank you.
John? So the, how many students are you anticipating or do you intend to have in a small group instruction?
Anywhere from probably three to six. Typically, it kind of depends on the schedule. Typically, it depends on the number of students in the section. So if there's only one tuba player, that student might just work with themselves. But if there are five trumpet players in the eighth grade band, for example, then they would come in for, for theirs.
Okay, so, I mean, you're worried about that, and I can understand that, whether you consider that a class or not and it would have to be approved since it's less than eighteen students, is that what you're getting at?
Well, we're not sure how that would work, but-
I understand, but at least if it's a group of three and a group of five and another group of three, I mean, you know, it's not just looking at those impotently, at least cumulatively, it's-
For us, it would be more about the minutes of instruction versus the number of students.
Okay, yeah, thanks, I like what you're saying.
Thanks.
Karen?
I don't have any questions at this time, thank you.
Are you kidding me?
Thank you.
Take it, move, take the wind.
I'll write them out later, I mean, I don't have, I have questions for later, I don't have questions for today, thank you.
So, one of the things that you were looking at was social media, are you guys hooking up with Logan Esquez?
Perfect, got it.
To get it on like the family chat and stuff like that, if you don't have members who are friends with the music part?
Yeah, we've been using our district-approved Whitnall, Whitnall Music Department Facebook page, but getting them pushed out on the, on the district social media avenues would be a good-
And Logan is part of that page as well.
Okay, good, all right.
I love your timelines, I like, like to see that, there's action there, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mike, don't go too far. We have, as per our agenda, you guys can leave.
Oh my.
We may need you. As per our agenda, a public comment will be accepted after the conclusion of each discussion item. And we have, I believe, a parent, Andy Vander Mullen, would like to come up to the-
I just did not want to be able to talk because I needed to say something.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you. Mike? All right.
That was scary.
Pretty friendly around here in the setup. All right, uh, world language.
You want to pass it or do you want to leave it here? Just leave it here, how about that?
I don't have my readers on.
I think they're bailing on you back there.
I know.
What's up with that?
I won't forget that.
They still get to introduce themselves, right?
We'll put them on the phone. Good evening, I am Natalia Delott, I'm the French teacher at the high school. I'm also the content lead for the world languages here at the Whitnall School District.
I am Amy Kep, I'm one of the Spanish teachers at the middle school for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
And I'd like, I'd like to also acknowledge our wonderful team over there. There's Amanda Weir and Katie Paeza and Anna Arcos and Andrea Wiesner and Sarah Brandt. Most of us have been here for a various number of years and it's a very diverse group of teachers as you can see right now and we're very excited to be here together. We wanted to start with, also with our vision, but we also wanted to make sure that you knew the, the reason we chose that vision is because we, we're looking at our program through a lens of this essential question of, how do we ensure that Whitnall world language courses are relevant to diverse types of students with different academic and personal goals? Our mission, obviously, is to, to the students, or to mentor students as they gain functional competence in language other than English, develop cultural understanding, and become responsible global citizens. And we do that by emphasizing communication skills during our classes. And we hope that by the time the students exit our program, they're able to communicate with others in a language other than English and to be culturally competent citizens. And if you look at the top three desired program outcomes as identified by the program survey, number one, ninety-nine percent of the responders said that the main goal of the program should be to understand and use a language, which is reflected in both our mission and vision. The second one was to understand cultures, and the third one was to meet college entrance requirements, which we will talk a little bit later, as this is one of the, one of the main reasons that students take our classes. Amy's gonna present what our program looks like today.
So, students are first introduced to world languages at the middle school level in sixth grade. And in sixth grade, they have the opportunity to do an exploratory year. So they have a semester of Spanish and a semester of French every other day. All students participate in exploratory experience in sixth grade. And at the end of sixth grade, students are required to pick a language, whether it's Spanish or French, for a two-year study. So if they take Spanish, they take Spanish for seventh and eighth year long, but they meet every other day. And if they take French, they take seventh and eighth year long every other day. And their experience equates to French one or Spanish one. So when they enter freshman year as a high school, they are, the expected outcome is that they would register for Spanish two or Level two for French as well. All the students in sixth, seventh, and eighth are required to participate in the language program. And then they have the option at the end of sixth grade to pick which language they want to continue studying. At the high school levels, one through four are offered for both Spanish and French, as well as AP courses for both languages. And there is that option for post-secondary world language courses for kids who either are beyond AP courses for Spanish or French or want to investigate languages that aren't offered by our school district.
After we have studied the data provided by the program review, we have realized that we are actually missing a very important voice, a voice of our students who are currently involved in the program. So we have designed two surveys to address this lack of information, as well as a survey to look at what the programs look like, world language programs look like in different districts around us. We also focused on collecting the data on the AP participate, AP exam participation from the same school districts. And as well as designed a survey for high school alumni to investigate what were their experiences like in the program at Whitnall, as well as how do they compare with those, if they continue to take world language at the college level, how do they compare and how do they feel about experiences at Whitnall? So Amy's team has designed a survey and she's going to present the results of what the survey gave.
After we looked at the original information from stakeholders in the district, we realized we were missing some pretty important information. So, we created a survey to, and distributed it to the thirteen surrounding districts to see what their world language programs look like, to see if we were competitive in the ballpark. And some of the questions, we, I just summarized the main five on there that we asked, were which languages their district offered. We also asked district what, what grade level their students were introduced to world languages. And as you can see, there was a portion that were elementary and there was a decent amount that was middle level. And then there were some that had no requirement and no, it no, it was offered as an elective, but it wasn't required. So, we had the world language requirements for the districts and of those thirteen, ten responded. Four of them required elementary language, eight of them required middle school language, and then two of them didn't have any requirement again. We also looked for more information for AP courses based on the data we got from stakeholders. Four of the district did offer AP courses in French and Spanish, and four of the districts offered dual credit courses as well, which we're hoping to get more information about to offer to the district and the board. We finally introduced, or surveyed districts on how often their language classes met, if they met every day, if they met every other day, if it was year-long, et cetera, to see what their exposure time was like in addition to qualifications and outcome expectations.
So now that we have an idea of what the program looks like at Whitnall and the surrounding schools, we'd like to address the, the data that provided by the survey. So, what is working? It was clear to us that the stakeholders value the language program and the dedication of its staff. You can see that sixty-five percent of the survey respondents say that the program meets or exceeds their expectations. And in every subgroup of the interview respondents, they responded that teachers are an asset to the program. And you can see the comments from middle school, high school students, parents, the staff, administration, and the school board that talk about the dedication of the staff, the passion of the staff, or the teachers who, who have, who make the class experience because they are the teacher. There were also obviously areas of concern, and one of them was consistency and rigor level in high school world language courses. And after looking through the data from the program review, I have noted that only, there was a one comment about the lack of rigor, two comments that stated that the courses were not challenging enough. Two people mentioned that their student was not fluent enough and two people mentioned that their student was bored in the class. However, if we look at the high school students' experiences, both in the program review data and our internal survey that we administer to our current students, you can see that high school students say that, that high school courses should be more conversational, like in the middle school. And forty-one percent of the students currently enrolled in world language courses exit the program because they perceive that the next level of language is too difficult. That was interesting to see to us that there is this disconnect between how the, the kids who are in the program perceive the program versus the people who are outside of the program, how they perceive it. Another area of concern was related to the student enrollment in world language courses at the high school. It was clear from the data that, that was provided by the program review that not all students take foreign languages they enter high school and many students exit the program after Level three or four. It depends on the year, but you can see the numbers are from twenty-three to twenty-seven percent at Level three and twenty-two to forty-three percent students exit the program after Level four, depending on the year. And so, one of the two main questions that we wanted to find out was why students do enroll in the foreign language courses and why they exit the program. So Kathy, if you would click on that first chart on the left. Yep, it should, no, it does not, oh, it does, perfect, technology, please work. Oh, no. So I will tell you then, since it's not working there. The chart illustrates the main reasons why students enroll in world language courses and the top reason is to increase the chances of acceptance in the college of their choice. We had two hundred, two hundred and sixty-seven students responding that that's their primary goal. One hundred and ninety-one students responded that they have genuine interest in languages, that's why they're taking the world language courses at the high school. One hundred and seventy-five students said that, felt that the language could be beneficial in their future career. And one hundred and fifty-three students value the content and skills taught in world language classes. So we can clearly see that the, the chances of acceptance of college of choice is one of the motivating factors in students taking the language classes. And the second graph presents to you, I will also read you off the numbers from, the chart from the top to bottom, reasons why students exit the program. The, the most of the students, twenty-eight, responded that they enter, exit the program because they have satisfied, or will have satisfied, college entrance requirements. Again, same reason they take, the same reason they exit. Twenty-five students responded that they perceive the next level to be too difficult, that, we already mentioned that earlier. And the other two answers have to do with the scheduling issue. And the other two answers have to do with the scheduling issues. Seniors specifically answered, eighteen of them, that they wanted a more open schedule during their senior year. So they wanted to leave the school early, take advantage of the open campus. And twenty-three students mentioned other scheduling issues where they were taking way too many AP classes and they, they just needed a break during the day, or just not being able to fit in the language course because of the conflict. And on the bottom, you can see the two charts where we asked the students what are their potential future career choices. And the green is the, as you can see, takes the majority, is the students who plan to enroll into the four-year college. And the chart on the left is the one that shows the students who are enrolled in Level One through Three. And as you can see, the number increases for the students who are enrolled in Level Four and AP. So our students who are enrolled in the higher level courses are definitely, the number is eighty-five something percent, are definitely college-bound kids. And another area of concern was AP exam participation. There was a comment, if you look at the data provided by the program review, the participation of students at Whitnell varies from eight to twenty-two percent amount all students enrolled in AP world language course. And the average exam scores in the last seven years would be two point seven five in French and two point four four in Spanish. So we also asked students why they choose not to take an AP exam at Whitnell High School. And the main reasons were, number one, they fear that they will not perform successfully. Number two was they're planning to take several other AP exams and they needed to prioritize, whether it was financially or it was just preparation time and effort. And another reason was that the students were planning to take a placement exam and continue taking a language in college, so to get the retroactive credits. We also collected, Amy also, Amy's team collected the data about AP participation and scores from the neighboring districts. And if we, if you were able to look at the data, I'll tell you what. There's three districts that have consistently a higher, a high number of students who take the exam and high number of students who score well on the, on that exam. And the districts are Cedarburg, Shorewood, and Whitefish Bay. Those districts have anywhere from twelve, twenty-one, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-eight students where they perform well on the AP world language exam. We also can see that in some of the districts, as Amy said, that there's no AP program altogether. And the other districts do not have large number of students taking AP exam at all. The numbers look like two, four, one, five, seven. So it, in, in this respect, it is not uncommon for the district to have AP language program. However, not a large number of students participate in, in the exam. And based on that information, we also asked our current students if they would be interested in an alternative to an AP language course, because a lot of them did mention the fact that they consider AP to be too challenging. And we saw that twenty-seven percent of current students say that they would take a dual-credit world language course. Some of them, sixteen percent of students, would take a non-AP world language course that would be a more conversational language and culture. So we're going to explore this opportunity to see if, if we can offer an alternative to AP language course, specifically in a, on a Spanish program, because we have a larger program and it is, by number of students, it is more viable to do. And finally, the last thing that we wanted to make sure to, for the board to note, that there was a considerable number of comments in the survey responses that addressed the earlier language exposure and language options at the district level. There was not a specific question about it, just a lot of parents commented that there was some, that, we, we saw some interest in language programming at the elementary level and/or more languages offered in general. So there were, there were eighteen out of fifty-nine parents who suggested earlier language exposure, six out of nineteen staff, and one out of seven community members. And language of choice, you can also see that, which was a smaller interest, but still there were people who commented about other languages offered. And obviously, we do know that there, there's wealth of research in the field of world language acquisition and that there are many benefits to early language learning, as well as benefits to language learning at any age. And you're welcome to click on the links there to read for yourself later. And finally, based on all the information that we collected from the program review, as well as our internal inquiry, we wanted to focus on the three things of our action plan. But again, we wanted to make sure that we look at everything that we do in the future for the program through the lens of ensuring that our variety of students with diverse academic and personal goals have an opportunity to take the language, because we strongly believe that languages are, and music are offering students something outside of their academic that they can feel fulfilled and they can excel at outside of academics. So we want to focus on retaining students in the program at the high school through investigating a possibility of offering courses other than AP world language for junior and senior students. So we surveyed the students. We're going to investigate the dual course requirements and potential for high school. And if, if we were to submit a course proposal to the school board, that would be in the next summer. We also noted that this, there was a comment about lack of common experiences through, in the high school. And we have already been working on this and we have already instituted a common curriculum in place. In the past, French and Spanish had different curriculum. Now we, all of our students have a common curriculum. So students in French II and Spanish II are working on the same unit with the same types of language and they have very similar experiences. Obviously, the cultural component will be different, but we are hoping that this will help, help us to plan together and help us to improve our program as we are going to work together. And that's the second point is continuous planning and collaboration throughout. It would also be nice to have more time to do that during our PD days. And finally, we are going to investigate opportunities for early entry level to Whitnell World Language Program and possible pathway options at the Whitnell Middle School through working with district administration and community. That's it.
Thank you. Steven?
Oh, I get to start. Okay. Two questions. When is it, what is a dual-credit course?
Dual-credit course is similar to some other courses that are offered in a variety of districts. Is when the students take a high school course, they also are enrolled in a college-level course. And thus they get credit for the high school course, as well as a permanent credit on their college transcript while they're still in high school.
Okay. I like what you've done with the vision statement as far as being encompassing. You know, the data that you presented about AP exams, it's the data that it is. And it's, again, your vision statement doesn't say we want people to all get five-star AP scores. So I kind of like that, but what I would like to see is a way to measure what your vision statement is, like providing that either fluency or those communication things to kind of say, okay, how can we work towards that? And it sounds like you're getting there with your classes, but it would be great to see like some measurement of how, what your steps to progress to get.
We actually have it in place. Interesting that, I'm glad you asked the question. For the last three years, Sarah and myself, we have been administering to our graduating seniors, every student who is enrolled in AP course is taking the Apple Measure of Language Proficiency in French or Spanish. We cannot admin, we, we kind of scaled down because of the financial issues, but we administer, the Apple is the, is guided by the ACTU, which is an organization that is, guides all of the foreign language instruction and teachers in the United States. And they offer an examination that, that is regardless of what language or what level or what school you came from, you get to perform and, and demonstrate the, the knowledge of the language in listening, speaking, reading, writing, and yeah, that's all. So unfortunately, we had to cut out writing because we, we needed to cut out five dollars per student. And it was taken a little bit longer than we had time at the end of the school year. But we would be glad to provide these, the results. We had actually several, quite a few students perform at the level of potential language teacher, so. Potential is the key word right there. So we have that in place.
Nancy?
I, I was a little surprised when you did a, with research for other districts that, that nobody is offering like a Mandarin class, like Chinese.
We just put the main three that were on there, it was Spanish and then German and French. There was one district that offered Mandarin, one district that had Chinese. And it sounded like it was a kind of a come and go, depending on finding qualified staff to run the courses. But yeah, districts vary by what languages they offered, we just put the three main ones on there.
Karen?
I'm going to dite what Steven said. And then just, can you tell me when they take that Apple Measure? Is that just once in there?
Yes, we do, we do offer it at the end of the year, senior year. So we try to do it in April so that it does not correspond with AP exam or any other assessments that the students are really focused on. And so usually in April that the students take that.
You mentioned that students in, I'm trying to remember the grade, was it sixth grade have the opportunity to do a semester of Spanish and, you mean it's required, right?
Yes.
Okay, there's a difference there. The, now you say then in seventh and eighth grades, because that's sixth grade, right?
Yes.
Seventh and eighth grades, whichever path they choose, but they have, they have to choose one, correct?
Correct.
And then that is the equivalent of a Level One?
Yes.
But now is that, is that equivalent of a Level One high school level course?
Yes.
But we don't give them high school credit for that, right?
I might be able to answer that question.
Yeah, so I don't think they get high school credit for that. But if they did, many colleges require two years' worth. So if they did get high school credit for that, and I don't know why they don't, but if they do get high school credit for that, then they could do one more year in, in high school and achieve the required minimum that a lot of schools require with just two years, right?
It does count as their, if, if they take sixth and seventh and eighth grade Spanish and then they take Spanish II as a freshman, they've met their two-year requirement.
They've met their two-year requirement according to colleges? I don't believe they do, not according to, my son's applying to colleges right now, so he met the minimum, but that's because he did two years in high school.
I have, I have a son who's a sophomore in college and he did middle school one, so I might be incorrect.
Did he go here?
No.
Yeah, I'm just.
So it may, it may differ by the, it may differ by the district.
What I'm staring at here is maybe that's something you need to follow up on. If, if kids are doing high school level stuff in middle school, why are they not getting high school credit on it? I think that's probably, doesn't just apply to the music, to the, I'm sorry, the foreign language department. I think that applies to math and some other things as well. So, and then I wondered about, you didn't mention Latin, was that one of those? You said Chinese and Mandarin were two of them that you didn't.
One, actually no districts offered Latin. I know Elm Brook does, but in the thirteen that we surveyed, nobody offered Latin.
Any idea of why?
Amy, I know, I have a few questions, if you want me to address that.
Sure.
Can you come up here and address, so I can hear you and we know who you are?
My name is Amanda Weir. I teach Spanish at the high school. As far as seventh and eighth grade counting towards high school credit, DPI stipulates, as far as I'm aware, DPI stipulates that there would have to be a common exit goal and common assessments between Spanish one at the high school and whatever Spanish one is at the middle school. So as we cannot offer that right now, because Spanish is seventh and eighth grade every other day, does not equal, equivalent, it's just not the same level because it's seventh and eighth grade versus a high school class. So what it serves as is a, it serves as a prerequisite at the moment. In eighth grade, if you can get Spanish one in eighth grade every day, same minutes as the high school and then have common assessments as the high school, there is a pathway through DPI to make those common, those common courses, in which case it would be offered as high school credit.
Okay, I, I would like some follow-up on that at some point, if we can. Because if they're doing, spread out over two years because they're younger, if they are doing the same stuff as one year in high school for Level One, I wonder why we can't get them.
Yeah, short answer is curriculum is not aligned at this point. It's something to look at. So yeah, that, I mean, that's a short answer, but we can follow up.
Same with doing math in the middle school, that they don't get that one at school.
Yeah, that's got a university answer too, so we can talk more about that a little bit more.
I wouldn't mind some follow-up on, on that.
Yep, got it down.
And then there was, what, what is, what is it about Level Four do you think that kids are? What is it about Level Four that you think kids are bailing on between three and four specifically? Is it, is Level Four more cultural-focused and that's not what the interest is? Or is it more language-focused and that's not what the interest is? Or are there bigger projects? Are you giving them?
I understand your question. And is, if you look again at the data, the students say that they exit the language. Their primary motivation to exit is when they have met the college requirements. If you look at UW Madison, which is one of the prestigious schools, it, on paper, it states that two language, two, two years, consecutive like years of the same language are required. However, at their website, it also states that the profile of accepted applicant has three to four years. So our students want to satisfy the requirement of their potential school that they are going to apply. And once they have satisfied it, they call it quits. Besides, seniors also said, we want more time during our day, so.
So you said Madison's a profile school?
Madison is considered one of the, not necessarily profile, but it's one of the more prestigious schools that some of our students may apply. So they want to cover their bases and they say, okay, if I'm ever going to plan to apply to Madison, I need to take at least three years of language. And some of those who really are focused on one of those higher-end schools are for sure doing the four years.
Have you guys looked at the requirements beyond Madison?
Yes.
And how does, how does Madison pair to others when it comes to foreign language?
Some colleges do not have any requirements, again. However, if you look at the profile of the applicant that is being accepted, most of them do have at least two years of language. And that, that's why you're seeing some attrition after Level Three. So the students have completed two years of language and they check their box, this is my. And again, as you saw, most of our students who are in language are college-bound.
Almost all UW system schools require two levels of a high school-level language. So when they come in, they satisfy two and three, that's when you start seeing that drop off.
There's just a lot of other schools in the country other than UW schools. So that's why I wondered how far we're actually looking, because some students may not go to UW systems.
That is correct.
Thanks. I appreciate all the, the research and the data you guys did, that, that helps me out a lot. Thanks very much.
Trevor?
So the one statistic you guys had in there that really struck me, because I went through the program myself, I have two students sitting in front of me, but it was the forty-one, yeah, forty-one and a half percent of the students had that perception that the next level was going to be that much harder. And I was going to ask, well, me personally, I felt that way going into college, but then it turned out I actually was very prepared for it. So I wanted to thank you for that, because I was able to test in the highest level that I could take one class. I got a bunch of retroactive credit. So I'm just wondering what, where do you think that perception comes from? Because I know I felt it and I don't know why I felt it.
I think, I can tell you from my perspective, as a sole teacher of the language at school, because I teach the language from when they're, they come to me as babies and then they get to be seniors and then we cry at the graduation together. They don't fear me, because I'm the only teacher that they have known and they know how I work and they know how things work. Mrs. Brand is the only teacher who teaches Spanish and sometimes they don't get to be the student in her class before AP Spanish. So I think part of that is not knowing and not being able to experience their teacher. Because we all know teenagers pick the classes also partially fifty percent based on the teacher, as well as the course. So I, that, that is my, my stipulation, but there's, like you said, there, there are other things where people think that, the students may think this is going to be difficult, but, and, and we all always encourage them to try. Go ahead and try, it's not, you might think it's difficult, but you're ready for it. And we actually have caught, talking with Katie over there, look at the comment, the students said, I don't think I'm good at this. And she's like, the student is awesome. Why? So sometimes it's the student's perception of themselves and their strengths and weaknesses.
Thank you. And I, I appreciate, I was going to say too, I appreciate that you went the extra step and like let's survey other districts and see what's going on.
We, actually that alumni survey is in progress, so we're hoping that they're going to, yeah, you probably saw it in the connect, that we are hoping to get some of the information from the students, from exactly what you were saying. How did they feel going into the college of a class? Did they feel prepared? Did they, where did they place? Are they use, are they planning to use it later? So that, that's all. We found it as an opportunity to, to actually investigate stuff for us.
Was it the seniors you interviewed, you sent it to as well, or just?
We sent it to the three graduating years, the students who graduated in nineteen, eighteen, and seventeen. And it was also posted to a. And it was also posted to a connect, so some parents of the students who may have graduated earlier could have forwarded that to them as well.
It might also be relevant, uh, current seniors, what they're doing.
Well, we, we surveyed the current seniors.
Oh, that was, that was picked into the previous data, I think.
So you stated that, uh, we don't offer writing because of five-dollar cut?
Uh, the, the full battery of tests is twenty dollars. And, um, writing is five dollars for, for the test to be rated, okay? And, um, reading and listening are both five dollars, and speaking. As we focus on speaking, our obviously main, main purpose was to see if our students can communicate in the language. So the ten dollars was a non-brainer, so, and then we were able to see like, well, this is allowed it, um, you know, this is the amount of budget that we have, how, what can we fit into that budget? And so something had to go.
So would it be advantageous to our students to have that?
We can look into that. We, the original pilot.
Five bucks a pop, how much are we talking?
We're talking, what is about, a little over a hundred, uh, maybe close to a hundred students.
Mike, are you listening?
Get cheaper wheels in the truck.
We can't find that in the budget? You don't know?
I haven't heard of this, but it would be within the middle school or high school budget.
See, yeah, that, that's where, yeah, it's within the high school budget, so that's pretty much. We asked for this amount, we said yes or no, that's it.
Well, maybe I suggest next year you add two hundred dollars to that.
Okay, we'll see, we'll see what happens, okay.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you, and thank you all of our teachers and staff members for your enthusiasm and professionalism. We, it is very much appreciated, and we're grateful that you choose, uh, Whitney School District to apply those skills. And I would not say that if I didn't mean it, so thank you.
Please come up, Nikki.
Stay for the power truck discussion?
Oh, Nikki's next.
Someone gets to stay.
You can come up, Nikki, yeah, if you come up.
All right, number six, A, discussion of future action items, twenty twenty-one international trip, Spain slash France.
Hi, so I, you already met me, I'm Nicole Tantoni, I teach art at the high school, um, and you've already read the proposal, but just as a brief summary, I'm proposing an eleven-day trip to Spain and France during the summer of twenty twenty-one, which will allow students the opportunity to explore, discover their natural curiosity and build their global competency. Um, this will be accomplished as my students will take place in an immersive experience, um, in a culture different than their own, or several cultures different than their own. While the tour will include various famous sites, the emphasis for this trip is art. Um, my students will have real-life interaction with, um, art and architecture that they may have only experienced on screens or even in books, if people still look at books, I don't know. They'll be able to see, create, and participate in art experiences. I know one of the activities was that they're actually going to work with a ceramicist in Spain and create something, which I'm so excited about that. This includes critique, reflection, um, again, actual art, um, creation. Current freshmen, sophomores, and juniors are eligible for the trip, and provided if we have some space, possibly some freshmen from next year. I wanted to have a long projection between now and the trip, so the students have a chance to, um, raise funds. I've got a bunch of ideas of ways that they can raise money, both individually and as a group. And then rather than detracting from, I know there are world travel opportunities in the school already, I'm thinking, um, of this as more of a way of extending the net to include students that might not have a passion for world language, but they want to be, you know, world travelers and experience different cultures. Um, and I had a chance this summer to travel with EF Tours and just to see exactly what, um, our students can expect, and I was very impressed with, um, with everything. So I feel very confident that this will be an amazing and life-changing experience for my students.
Is it a different tour company than we use for the, uh, France, and it is a different company?
Yeah, it's EF Tours.
Okay. Karen?
Can I just, I just reminder to the board that, um, typically the trips, only the first time they're, um, offered at the district come to the board level, and after that, then they just need superintendent approval. So that's why this is a trip that's not ever been offered before, so I just want to remind her in terms of policy, um, what that looks like, so.
Any questions, Karen?
Yeah, is this just open to art students, or is it basically anybody in the school who has an interest in the travel?
I, it will take as many, well, realistically, students who want to go as, as would like to go. I would like to just, um, when you have smaller groups, you have to share the bus and things with other schools. And my goal is to fill a bus, and we have just Swinell kids traveling together, so.
John?
Nope.
Thank you.
Kevin?
I appreciate you doing this, because I agree with you, unless you're in, and not to say that the French trip's bad, because it's great, but unless you're in there and you have the passion for it, probably not going to France, whereas this can give you a wider opportunity.
Even?
I want to go.
If she fills the bus with kids, she'll need to.
Yes.
Nancy?
I want to go too. I think it's great.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Key continuous improvement strategic plan.
If you want to go to the attached. Wait, what's happening? We have nobody leading the meeting. What happened? I don't know, there's no setup, so I'm ready to go, but we're losing three board members, so I should probably wait till we, I mean, we have a quorum, I guess, but.
Hey, rabbit. We gained one.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Karen must get water.
Okay, okay.
Quinn's out there.
I believe we have a meeting going on.
He might be signing T-shirts, I'm not sure.
He's not impressed.
He thought he was going to work for DIT, John.
When he runs a show, he can do whatever he wants, takes breaks.
I introduced, what, what do you need me to do? I introduced it.
Well, then you leave, like, I thought you'd want to hear it, maybe, like, I don't know, you can introduce it, but.
Joe, come on up.
No, it's me, like, we're ready to go, like, when you introduce it, I was ready to go, and three people got up in the lab, so I was like, I don't know.
Maybe they were trying to tell you, so I.
I don't know either. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, well, I wonder where you're hearing it.
So in your packets, there is, um, some, some documents that go with this, and just for a little bit of background, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but we've been working on this process, um, specifically on this continuous improvement process since last spring, um, when, um, Joe Weitzer was introduced to the board in April, and we decided to bring him along for our continuous improvement journey to help facilitate that process. Honestly, it's probably been in the process much longer than that, as we've been trying to, when I came on board, there was not a strategic plan, which made it a little bit challenging to try to decide where to focus efforts, align resources, all of those things that we typically do. And trying to gather some background data, some community input in terms of what is it that we, we want to, who are we? And then what is it that we want to become from there? So excited to finally see some, some of that work put into a strategic plan, um, so it's beyond just annual goals, but that we're looking at something much broader than that. And so the work that you see, while it looks pretty simplified in its documents in here, really has a lot of work in a lot of the, um, the teams, um, that you've seen present, both at our work session on the twenty-third, and, uh, prior to that with our, uh, workshops this summer. I really put a lot of time and effort into getting what it is that we really think, um, we're trying to become as a district that, that meets the needs of the community, but then also, um, what it is to, uh, to get there. So what you have tonight is a revision, a little bit of the prospectus, and I do want to point that out, there was, um, some, some comments last time to the board about a couple of the phrases that were in, um, mission statement at that time, and so those have been reworked a little bit. I think we simplified it, uh, in terms of what it was. The vision statement before, we really had a tagline, and so in terms of what does that mean, what is the vision that we're trying to build, this really talked about the student. So if you look at the purpose, which is typically a mission statement, is what we do, that is what we do as a district. The vision is what we're trying to become, and really focuses on the students themselves, what we want students to be able to do once they leave us and go out into the world. We hadn't quite yet captured that anywhere. We had talked about what we're doing besides just, you know, listening to the unique story of every child, or engaging learners, but we really never said what it is we want them to become once they leave us. And so this time, the vision sort of really, um, elaborates on that piece of it. So seeing that all together, um, in terms of the prospectus, and then moving into the document, the accompanying document that looks much like it, um, the strategic plan having the four, uh, focus areas on there, if you will. It doesn't have the measures or all the action plans, but this would be something that the community would look at from a high level in terms of what are the four areas that they're focusing on within student achievement, a unified culture, engagement, and then the financial and operational excellence. From there, uh, measures, which are in the board packet, that column is added. At our work session, you did get a glimpse at potential action plans or action steps, if you will. Each of those action steps would then have a plan involved with it, and that's where you really start to get into the details in terms of, um, who does that, when does that look like? This is not just a one-year project, what steps need to come before it? Obviously, we're not going to do all of these things simultaneously. As part of an action plan, there might be something that's uncovered that, that requires us to do something else that we didn't even see, but that's part of the process. So what the board has tonight is the strategic plan in terms of the framework, the four focus areas, the goals, objectives, initiatives. And the measures are, for the, for the most part, placeholders. I wouldn't get too hung up on the exact numbers. We talked a little bit about that at the work session, you know, is a hundred percent, or ninety-five percent, or October first in exact. I think we're going to work that through as part of the action plan. But those give you an idea of that's what the measure would be to determine, determine if there was success in that statement. But those also, as this is a, is a living, breathing document, um, will look, be looked at to determine, um, whether those measures, as we do that. Right now, we don't have a lot of baseline data. We have not yet given, uh, family engagement surveys, we have not given staff engagement surveys. So we can't tell you we want to improve it from a four-point-one rating to a four-point-five rating because we haven't even gathered baseline data. That's what this first year will be about. So as we move forward and look at things like measures, we will be able to say, okay, if last year our baseline data on this engagement survey was, we probably want to improve that, and what strategies do we put in place to make sure that happens? So in some of the measures, just be aware that we don't quite have baseline data to determine what it is that we want to improve from. So that is part of the measure piece that will be worked on as we continue to do that. Plan moving forward is after we, um, talk about tonight, uh, on the twenty-eighth, um, it'll be brought forward for the board to take action on that. Once we have an approved framework, um, work will begin on action plans. And on the eleventh, we have, uh, tentatively stated, uh, training to sort of talk about the board's role in monitoring the strategic plan, what questions to ask, how do you know when parts are being successful, what does it look like when parts are not? And then, uh, having monthly, probably at the first meeting, the workshop meetings, um, reports, similar to what we did with, um, school safety and referendum, we had monthly updates. And if there was something to update on those pieces that are being worked on, those would be reported out to the board on that, uh, first, uh, meeting of the month. For the record, um, we appreciate that, you know, the questions that were, um, solicited during the work session and answers that were provided, and just so we don't have to go through all of those tonight, we will, I will have Kathy share the, uh, questions and answers that were asked last time, in case people are looking at those. So we, after tonight, we always put the presentations that were given tonight, like the program reviews, um, we put that out, uh, for the public to be able to see. So we'll include those in there in case people want to see what other questions were vetted through, um, from the work session up until this document here. So that being said, um, questions both about process or, or any parts of it that you see, um, that we can address at this time.
Oh, it's you?
It was me?
Oh, it's you.
All right, you're first.
No, um. How's that feel? I love you too, Chris. No, by all means, I'll pass to Kathy, please.
Uh, oh, excuse me, that's not the direction.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Kevin?
I don't have any questions at this time. Oh, you're on the spot, yeah?
John?
I'm not on the spot, to be true.
Area-focused student achievement, uh, under goal. From reading the goal, I'm not getting any sense of personalized in there, maybe I'm just in the wrong frame of mind, but, uh, and maybe I'm looking, maybe I'm thinking of the wrong thing compared to what you guys were after, but it, it just seemed to me since, part of the whole purpose of what we've been after for a while is personalizing the educational experience to maximize a, a child's potential, to, to maximize how much of their potential we can reach, we can get them to. I, I see efficient, I almost feel like it ought to be effective, and something ought to be in there about, uh, personalized.
Okay, so it's.
Does that make sense?
Yep, yeah, no, I think, I, I, so what, what it is, is that the word standardized seems to be the opposite of what we, the word standardized really sticks out a lot, yep, I, I get that.
Well, and efficient sounds, if, when you, especially when you have efficient and standardized, with model, and I mean, just the whole thing, to me, sounds like a regimented, uh, business.
What?
Effective.
I wrote this, John.
That's what I thought. It's, although it's black and white, so if you did, I'm a little bit disappointed, but anyway, um, you, you, given them after there.
I do, I do.
Personalized and more effective as opposed to efficient. I mean, we need to try to do things as efficiently as, as possible to maximize how far the dollars can go. But in this, uh, I mean, I, I just think that that's a, what I think belongs more here for students' achievement is effective and something personalized, personalized.
Building off that, can I ask, so when it says? You had your turn. I'm sorry, you're right, no, you're right, absolutely, you're right, no, I apologize.
Go ahead, John.
Shoot myself in the foot, okay?
Please.
No, I, just building off of that, is this meant to say that the model and the structure and the standardized for the students or on the backend and R end, that the programs we create, the resources we give, that's all standardized and efficient? Children, uh, students can use the resources they feel more comfortable with, but we're providing consistent resources across the board?
Yeah, I think it really emphasizes that there's a model to go through, yet the, the model creates personalized outcomes or plans, if you will, for each student. I do see how it can read that way off the, off the piece of it. So let us think about that a little bit, but, but it's the model at the, the highest level, the model and the process that we go through, so we're not, that every, but the outcome is sort of personalized.
I, I under, I understand why those parts of it are in there. I just think that as a goal for student achievement, one big thing we've been striving for in this district is the personalized learning experience to maximize the individual's potential and, uh, or our reach of the individual's potential, and, and also, nothing in there about effective. So that's, that's, but I understand exactly what you're saying, John. How about that, Lori says?
Karen?
Yeah, well, I've already asked a lot of questions, so, um, so I have a few, um, comments. I'm really excited that we're doing, that we're measuring employee engagement, and that we're working on community engagement. And so my only additional question at this time is, what will be the frequency of those measurements? So that, you know, a year's a very long time, um, so I'd really like to see a frequency of, I'd rather see more quick, um, and frequent temperature takes, so we can see if we're progressing and it's, and that we know that we're moving.
Nancy?
Uh, I don't have any questions at this time, I think it looks good, I can, you can tell you spent a lot of time on it.
I'm good, Stephen?
Yeah, no, it looks like a lot of solid work went into this, so it was really impressive.
Anybody else? Thank you, Lisa. C, co-curricular code revisions.
Good evening, everybody. In the packet that's provided, um, there's been a couple, uh, revisions that would like to be made to our co-curricular code of conduct. Uh, unfortunately, in a review of the code, it was noted, um, that in, in, a, a page was missing from the, the previous code that was not meant to be removed, uh, during the revisions this past summer. So, uh, between pages, uh, six and seven, uh, at the end of page six and the beginning of page seven is what I would like to add, uh, back into the code, uh, as well as some clarity, uh, from some feedback after that revision of some additional, um, ads to the code for a honesty clause, as well as a self-reporting clause, as well as some transparency when it comes to the actual amount of, um, contests or events that you would miss if there was a code violation.
Is there any, uh, for a person? For a person that self-reports or a person that's honest, do they get the same penalty as a person that does not do those two?
No. With this clause, they would have their reduce, or their consequence reduced to whatever is best for that student. So one of the programs that we are currently working is with the Student and Family Aid Assistance Program that the school's working with. So if the student has a, unfortunately, a code violation, we'll just say with vaping or underage drinking, if they self-report, we would have the liability to, or not the liability, the luxury to reduce that penalty from the strict 25% and say, if you attend so many sessions of the Student and Family Assistance Program, that we can reduce that to, say, two games or one contest or one event, whatever we feel is appropriate.
I like that. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have one thing.
Sorry.
I can't find it now in here, but I read it somewhere where there was some consequences for a student who was at a party that was drinking even though that student wasn't drinking?
If you are attendance at a party and you do not leave immediately, there would be a consequence, correct?
Under infraction matrix.
So what if the student didn't know there was drinking?
We'd have to go through the investigation and then deem that. But if there was actually drinking at the party and they knew that there was drinking at the party and chose not to leave, then we'd have to take that into consideration. We'd also, obviously, would the investigation dictate on how well they're communicating with us, if they are reporting, or if they're being honest? And there's a lot to that investigation that dictates what that final outcome would be.
Karen?
I apologize if I'm going off course, but I'm curious about if this applies, it's written very much for athletics. And then I'm curious about how that translates, or if it translates or applies to other activities. I believe last year, we canceled an entire play. And I'm like, well, how does that translate, you know, from one thing to the other? So I, I was just curious about it because there are a lot of references to athletics? And is it clear? I'd have to read it all through again, but I'm just...
So one of the purposes of this whole review this last summer was to include the activities aspect as well. So I am currently meeting with every single club, and I have a meeting with every single club to make sure that they understand that they do fall underneath this. So for example, let's just say a drama has 10 shows. Those would consist the same as, say, 10 competitions for an athletic event. It goes into a variety of different activities and events that those club advisors choose to have, and those would dictate then what they would have to potentially sit out of if there was a code violation.
But you're looking for more verbiage?
Well, I'm seeing a lot of reference to athlete, 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 athlete in the text, and so to me, I just don't know if it's clear.
Well, it starts out...
We say student. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to handle it, or if it's... So it was just, it's just a question that I had without digging deeply into this.
Sure.
You can take it for, just as a question.
John?
I agree with Karen. It says criminal behavior, colon, and athlete. And I think that it needs to go beyond the scope of just athlete. Throughout, I also, though, am concerned about, it seems that a student, or the district would have to meet a much lower standard to convict in this district a student than the courts do. So the way this is laid out, we are willing to label a student, for lack of a different term, a criminal in the eyes of the district before the courts get to it. And I don't mean a violator, I suppose might be a better term, but before the courts deal with it. And I don't know if that would help or hurt the court case, and if it's fair to be judging them on a lower, with a lower standard than the courts, I don't know. I think that's something I'd like to explore. And then the other thing is, who decides? The investigation and who decides ultimately the outcome and the results?
For the code in general, are you asking of who makes the...
No, no, no. I mean, the code has to go through us, but I mean...
No, when I say, when you say the consequence, are you saying like, who makes the decision if it's a code violation or not, or...
Yeah, because somebody investigates.
Correct. So that'd be myself and administration.
Okay, so it's going to be more than one person who'd be running the investigation?
Depending on what the situation is, yes.
And then how do we, where, you got to establish the standards with how you're going to decide if they're guilty or not?
So with the investigation, based off of what we find with the investigation, if it falls underneath the infraction matrix of something happened, we go off of that and what is actually in the code. If we talk about it with other administrations, with Mr. Tolson, or the dean of students, or assistant principal, and we find that we need to make an adjustment based off that individual student, then we're going to try to put the best case forward for that student. But ultimately, it's going to be a decision made by our administration.
Okay. I just think that some of that needs to be spelled out, so it's a more identified process. And then, unless it's spelled out somewhere else, so I don't have the whole thing memorized. And then the, there was one more thing. Oh, you mentioned like 10 basketball games in 10 plays. Are you getting at maybe a percentage of the activity, like forfeit, one-third, be banned from one-third of, 30%, or something like that, of that group's scheduled formal activities?
Correct. Depending on the tier.
10 baseball games is not the same as 10 football games, you know what I mean? As far as percentage of the season lost and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, it's under the consequence chart, right? 25%?
Correct.
Where is that? I'm not seeing it.
That's on page eight, under code violation consequence chart.
These pages aren't numbered, I'm sorry.
And just above the...
There's 33 in your package.
Okay.
And then it's just above the infraction matrix.
So that 25% means percent of the season or whatever?
Correct, yes.
Okay, I didn't realize that. Maybe that just needs to be thrown on that.
Kevin?
How often, and just ballpark, I don't want specifics, how often is someone guilty of being there and not leaving? Because I always find that, I understand the policy, but I always find it troubling. We're going to say it's taking someone's word against the other unless they openly admit, yeah, I know I was drinking there, but I mean, is that a frequent occurrence or are we...
It is not frequent at this time.
Okay.
So...
Fair enough.
Jonathan? Steven?
Nope.
Nancy? Karen?
I have another one, yeah. Can you just walk me through the honesty clause and like what that might look like? So it says that students are expected to be honest, and if they are honest, then their suspension will be reduced? And so...
If it's deemed that there's a suspension that needs to take place.
That was the first question Quinn had asked, if someone self-reports, are they given the same punishment as someone who doesn't self-report?
Well, but there's two different sections. There's a self-reporting section, and then there's an honesty clause section, so I wanted to get at the difference between the two.
Sure.
So... So is the honesty thing like a... Does that come across as a confession, or is it like...
For example, it's if we start an investigation and we ask a student, were you at this party? Yes, I was. So they're being honest with us, they're...
If you have evidence, correct?
Correct. And they're working with us and communicating with us. We will take that into consideration, saying, you're being forthcoming with us, you're being honest, let's move forward with a consequence that we fits that bill. So there are students, unfortunately, that we have evidence on and choose to lie to us. We're trying to give them the benefit of the doubt to do what's right, so...
Are you saying that the honesty is going to, but it's not necessarily going to take away all the consequences? Do you know what I mean?
It depends on whatever, what that...
The severity.
The severity of it is, correct, yes.
It just sounds like it's an automatic reduction, and that's what it is. It's an automatic reduction.
Correct.
Of an undisclosed amount, but the contest reduction will not be added to the students' penalty reduction for self-reporting?
Correct.
So what do you mean by that?
So if you self-report, you're, you get a reduction. If you then, when we're talking to you and you're being honest about it, we don't add that to that self-reporting because...
In other words, not a cumulative reduction?
Correct.
You only get one reduction?
Anybody else? Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Purchase of snowplow truck.
All right. So what this, I'll go ahead and start, and Todd can join in.
Great.
Because this came up through Finance and Facilities Committee. So what the conflict comes on to is we've got two snowplows right now. Both of them are regular-sized pickup trucks. So they're both in good condition right now. There's a chance that as they age, we could be without one. We are currently at a point where if we have a significant snowfall of like 6 to 8 inches, starting work is about 2:00 in the morning, and we're working on trying to get everything cleared by 6:00, 6:30, so we can have our district open. So a couple of things have come up that have changed that. One is we were able to use Hales Corners. They store our salt for us, and they used to help us out some of that, and it sounds like we've gotten moved down on their priority list a little bit. They're still being gracious to let us store the salt there. But one of the other things we figured out is the thing that we apply the salt with is actually not rated for the trucks we have. So what we're trying to do is to purchase a larger dump truck that can better accommodate our salt thing. We're going to get a more flexible type of plow that will work on our newly renovated Hales Corners Elementary School that's got a lot of new sites to it that will be more complex for the plows that we currently have to use. And since we've already committed to being a self-service plowing with this, to kind of backpedal and try and find a company that would service us and do it, would probably be a lot more expensive than just buying this truck. And the other thing is, by getting a dump truck, we can also use it throughout the year for other things like moving dirt, mulch, all that kind of stuff. So it's something that we could continually use. It wouldn't just be for plowing, but this would be one of the main things with it. And I will let you talk about the three bids we got.
Anything you want to add?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so if I can add to kind of Steven's introduction here, the main reason is safety. The overall safety of not only our custodial staff who drives these plow trucks, but the safety of our students and staff who are arriving at our buildings early in the morning. So as Steven said, we do start plowing at 2:00 in the morning, depending on how much snow we get. I've actually been in a plow truck a few times. I've actually arrived the night before and started plowing at 10:00 at night when we got a bigger snowstorm. The speed at which we need to plow with two vehicles is unsafe. The manufacturers recommend that you don't go above 12 miles an hour driving a plow on a truck. We're plowing snow at 15 to 20 miles an hour just to get it done. We also have to plow the lots multiple times because if I, if we start at 10:00 the night before, it snows all night, we have to plow them again to get it done. So the main reason, the main driver for this is safety, safety of our students, our staff, and our custodial staff. The new parking lot at Hales Corners Elementary, if you looked at a Google Earth shot of Hales Corners Elementary prior to the renovation of the parking lot, you would say, well, it doesn't look like there's much more asphalt there. There's really not. We removed an area of the building, we turned it into a parking lot, but we actually took that portion of the building and took it away from the playground on the other side of the building. But we, what we did add there was we added curbs, gutters, and islands. And it makes it more time-consuming to do something that has curbs and islands than it does in open space. We, as Steven alluded to, we partner with Hales Corners DPW. They help us out with our plowing operations at Hales Corners. They've done that for years. Not that they're backing out on us, but they have indicated that they're short on staff just like we are. So if Hales Corners DPW gets into a bind and they need to plow a street and they have an equipment breakdown, we've now fallen down the chain for them. So obviously, they have to get their streets plowed before they can come and do our parking lot and playground. So that also falls into the equation here. With those additional curbs and gutters that we've added as a parking lot, they use a front-end loader to do our lots, which has a 12-foot blade on it. There are some areas that 12 feet would be touching the curbs on each side because it's tight. So we need to have a plow that we can actually do with more efficiency. As Steven also alluded to, the truck that we have our salter in now is only a 3/4-ton truck. Our salter is rated to hold a ton and a half of salt. So we're overloading it, which is obviously harder than the equipment that we currently have. Again, it's more efficiency than it is anything, and safety. Also, as Steven alluded to, this is not just a plow truck. It will be a dump truck that will be able to move small amounts of gravel, topsoil, mulch through the district. So that way, we can do some more projects internally that I would normally have to contract out. So in a nutshell, that's about it.
Want to go over the proposals, the bids?
Sure. So we received three bids. One from Holtz Motors, one from Lynch Motors, and one from, I'm not, I don't have...
Hiller Ford.
Hiller Ford. Lynch's proposal came in just a little bit less than Holtz Motors, but as we all know here, we have a great relationship with Holtz, and it's a local business, and it's a place that we should probably give our business to. I think it was... What was it like?
Hundreds of dollars.
Yeah, it was hundreds.
I don't think it was a thousand, it was hundreds.
Right. The proposal is for a one-ton dump truck, or I'm sorry, a ton and a half dump truck. The proposal is for a 2020 vehicle. If we order, I'm sorry, if you guys approve this purchase at the end of the month and we place the order, it wouldn't be until January that we would actually get the vehicle because they have to build it. Holtz is currently looking for a 2019 dump truck to provide us, which if they can find one and do a dealer trade, it would potentially be at a lower cost than what's in the proposal for the 2020.
John?
What, you said, you said contract out? What would that cost?
Contract services is based on a per-truck price and then a per-ton salt price. In my previous district, we contracted services, and it was typically about three times the amount that we pay per ton per salt to have it brought in and applied. And then you paid a per-truck vehicle cost as soon as the plow hit the ground. Now, that was a number of years ago, but I haven't looked into contracting services because I feel that the district has made a substantial investment into the equipment that we have, and in my opinion, I don't think it would be the right direction to go right now.
I understand, but when you said we had to contract stuff out, you want me to compare, you know, these prices here, I need to think about, you know, how long the equipment might last and how much a contract might cost on a typical... You see what I mean? So I mean, if the equipment might last 10 years the way we use it, but we can get more than 10 years' worth of contract out of the money, then it would be more effective to do contract. I think contracting can be fairly expensive.
It's quite expensive. We would easily spend what we're going to pay for this vehicle in probably a half a year of salt.
Yeah. So I mean, that's what I figured, but I just kind of wanted, and I don't like to go on assumptions. I like to have better knowledge. And then, when I, away, I think, anyway. And then, what is the age and condition of our other two? Are you kind of keeping those correct?
Yes, we're going to keep those. Those vehicles are in very good condition. They're maintained yearly at Holtz. We take them in for yearly service checks. I believe we have a 2015 Chevy pickup truck and a 2013 Chevy pickup truck.
Are they both 3/4-ton or is one a half-ton?
They are. No, they are both 3/4-ton. They both have diesel engines in them.
They have, they have, each have blades on them?
Yes.
And you use them both for salting as well?
Only one does salting because we only have one large salter which goes in the back of a pickup truck. We also have a few, John, your tractors that have smaller salters on them that we use for our sidewalks.
Sidewalks. Thanks very much, appreciate it.
Yep.
Kevin? John? Jonathan, excuse me. Steven?
I'm good.
Nancy?
No.
Karen?
I'm good.
I do have one question. I drove by, I just was driving by Holtz the other day, and they have, I don't know, four and a half dozen, those are, they had dump trucks on it.
Those are all sold.
They're all sold?
Yeah.
Really?
Yep.
That was the kind of vehicle we were looking for?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, I was like, they're sitting right there, I don't know.
Right, yep. I actually, I thought the same thing when I spoke to Holtz about the bid for the truck, and they said, no, everything we have on the lot is sold.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
E, Falcon Field Video Board. Steven?
I guess that's me again. All right, so we had a really busy FNF committee meeting that day. So this was something that was brought up a long time ago... So this was something that was brought up a long time ago talking about what we can do about the video, the non-functioning video portion of the scoreboard at Falcon Field. So what came out of that and some exploration is a company that's called Daktronics that can give us some options for a video scoreboard. Now, a little bit of the history with Daktronics is that they are a CISA recommended, um, business. So that means that CISA has kind of done a lot of the things and they're, have been deemed as being one of the best services, one of the best to work with and giving one of the best prices for, uh, schools in the state. I guess particularly in our CISA.
It's a purchasing co-op. And so this purchasing co-op is the, uh, they, they do the work there especially for districts where you say, we can actually bid these things out and this company came back as the low bid and the quality and all those pieces. So CISA purchasing is a co-op that we joined in, in order to, um, take advantage of some of those, the, the work that they've already accomplished for districts and have the purchasing power of a number of districts who've joined the co-op as well. So continue on.
Sure, thanks. So part of what, they had a multiple options looking at this. And what we looked at at the field was everything from a completely new scoreboard to putting a video board on top of our current scoreboard on different models of doing that. Um, one of the, some of the questions that we discussed was what's the life expectancy of our current scoreboard? It's about seven years old and from what we can tell, we should have about another ten to fifteen years left in it. The parts that are running it and everything are still available and hopefully would not be an issue as far as that goes. Uh, we talked about power consumption for some of these video, larger video boards that if you ran it every minute of the day for a year, it'd be about $10,000, which boils down to about $2 per hour for regular use.
It was a range, it was a range of $2,500 to $10,000, like max, like you're running major commercials all day, every day, which is not, which is not what we're doing. But that would be $10,000, you know, and, and if you're just showing some stuff on there, fixed images, not using max wattage, it'd be as low as $2,500, so. That's if you're running it every day, 24/7.
Exactly. So what we, there's also some audio versions that kind of go with it that we thought would be beneficial to actually project the audio back towards the field and the bleachers versus it coming from the bleachers and not always being able to hear announcements and things like that. Plus we would have the ability to repurpose the speakers, the audio system that we currently have for some other things. So that kind of wrapped us into what Daktronics also does is they have a way of creating a sponsorship kind of path for you to follow. So we would be able to purchase a new or have a new video board with essentially almost zero cost to the district because the way that this company works is they give you the process to follow to get sponsorship on the board and you don't purchase the board until you've met a five-year payback for it over that, for a five-year period of time. So that until you get the agreements from sponsors to cover it, they don't do anything with it and they give you about a year to do it. If you don't do it within that year, the contract gets voided. So it's almost at a no risk thing to do it this way. And they showed us like some different options of what sponsorship would look like. Going back to what we even talked about with sponsorship almost a year ago now, at least six months, and pulling the board as to what people are comfortable with sponsorship, it was felt that the scoreboard was a place that the board was very comfortable with using sponsorship for. Another thing that Daktronics had is they showed us what an indoor version of this would look like if we wanted to do something in the gym. I think the people on the finance committee kind of felt back, they wanted to just look at the Falcon Field for now. Other things that you can do with it besides just football games and the outdoor events is you can actually use it as like a movie theater, you could have family film nights. You can use it for other things along those lines. So there would at least give a little more flexibility with it. But the best part is the way that it's financed is something that is done through sponsorship, so it's not something that we have to do. It was something that they can design around our current scoreboard so that we wouldn't lose that functionality.
Steve?
I agree.
Yeah, I, I should admit, if I, if I may.
You sure may.
I think an important aspect of the sponsorship piece of this is that when Dave and I met with individuals that represented different companies, they were like, we're interested, what can you offer? And we say, well, we have a broken video board that we would be cool and, and, and that's, that's all we can, that's all we can really say. Well, I, I would be interested in that if that was working. So we realized kind of during those meetings that we were getting too far out ahead of where we needed to be. And that's when we pulled back and said, all right, what happens now if we actually take a look at this scoreboard? We had looked at this a couple of years ago and I think the company that came in at that time, it, it was you would have the scoreboard, but they would take continuously the revenue from the, from the advertising. This is looking at a way of saying, we'll help you get off your feet, you get the revenue. It goes back towards the payback of, of, of the scoreboard over five years. But then after that fifth year, when the scoreboard is paid off, now it's yours and away you go, which was a much more attractive offer, at least, uh, to me than what we saw a couple of years ago. A solution that, that seemed us more in control of, of what is, is going on.
Right. And this definitely, as you showed, gave a mechanism of what we can now offer potential people who are interested in the sponsorship. Whereas before we're just like, well, we could put your name on it. This, this actually has a way of, this is what it would look like, this is what it could do. We could run ads in between plays or whatever. There's, you know, a lot of graphic system that we could incorporate into our curriculum if we wanted to. We can get pre-canned stuff versus stuff that they can make. So it gives a flexibility for us to create what we want with it and make it an experience that's unique to our district.
Javon?
Do you have a picture of it to show?
I was going to say, what we are bringing forward to the board is a complete replacement out there. It is, it is taking everything. So, uh, what we have out there with the, so, so the two terms I'm using are scoreboard, which is the digit, which is just the.
The numbers.
The numbers and video board. What we are proposing is a complete tear off and a new video board with the top strip being the scoreboard. Um, and then on top of that, the, the Whitnall piece, you would have the, uh, speakers going back towards, um, our, our crowd. And so I think the takeaway near the end of the finance facilities discussion on this was if we're going to do this, we've got this beautiful stadium turf field. If we're going to go out and get sponsorships, let's do this the right way and let's make this a, a real nice piece that's out there and also have community be proud of it, but also as many community vendors being a part of that, uh, purchase as well. And so that's why we're off, we, we are proposing what we're proposing, which was a full replacement. The current scoreboard, there's a 15-year life expectancy. So we're halfway through that right now. Um, the, the unattractive piece of adding a video, video board on top of the current scoreboard was that we would have two operating systems now. What Daktronics would offer now would be just one system. You, they would als- also be independent of each other where you could be running the video board, but if the video board wasn't needed, you shut it off, simply run, uh, the, the scoreboard. And it was as simple as coaches being able to pull up an app if it's.
Correct.
You know, Saturday practices, you don't want to have Dave running up there because he's got the key and he's got to be there for five minutes to open it up. You got an app that can run that digit, the, the scoreboard piece of it. This is the exact same scoreboard that, uh, Mesquigo Norway went with.
Correct.
Um, in their particular stadium as well. Um, and, and went through Daktronics, through the CISA purchasing also. So, um, you can go view that at any time you want, but, um, that's what we're bringing forward for the board to, to consider.
Kevin?
I'm good.
John?
So would this be a dollar for dollar thing for the advertisers? Or do we get sixty, they get forty and then once our sixty percent is added up to the cost of the board, we, we pay it off or the forty percent they get adds up to the cost of the board, then we pay it off?
The first five years pays off the board, after that it's all ours. So they.
But dollar for dollar or not?
The whole thing.
Okay.
So we wouldn't see.
A thousand dollars worth of advertising goes, a, a thousand, if, yeah, if we get a thousand dollars worth of advertising, it's a thousand dollars that goes towards the board.
Right.
Okay.
This is, and, and to, to also just to clarify that, this is simply an option that Daktronics offers. So for example, if we just said, hey, we've got the two forty-eight, we would just pay it off and that would just.
That's the option we go with?
Correct.
Yeah. So, uh, what's the life expectancy of this board?
So they will support, it's, it's fifteen to twenty.
Correct, fifteen to twenty.
Probably fifteen to twenty. They sup, once they are done producing the board, which happens, it hasn't happened with this particular board yet.
That means it's getting closer to being.
Correct, but, but they will supply parts for up to 10 years after the production of the board has stopped.
So we get it this year and they stop production next year, the best we can get is another 10 years for the parts.
Eleven years before parts would then not be available anymore.
What's the warranty?
Very difficult.
What's the warranty?
Five years.
Yeah, I think it's outlined.
And then, and then, uh, yeah, but I'd just like to get it all.
Yeah, no, five years.
So five years. So in five years' time, we're out of warranty. In 10 years' time, worst case, we could be out of parts. Best case, in theory, we get 20 years out of the board. Would we pay for the board that we have, the video and score and all that stuff? I know the video portion isn't working, the rest of it is. Would we pay for?
The original scoreboard?
Yeah.
I don't know.
It was six figures, I know. And then they, they came to the board, I wasn't on the board yet, but they came to the board with an additional proposal to make it even bigger for a little bit more money and they went for that, so.
I'd have, I'd have to look at the whole board now.
During installation?
Yeah, yeah. It, it was all part of a, it'd probably be difficult for us to look at. I mean, it, it is a 2011 purchase, we actually don't even.
Well, but they thought it was a good idea at the time too, so that's something we need to look at. Any kind of parallels or anything here because they thought it was a good idea to the point where when the company and installers came to them in the middle of the project with, hey, for a little bit more money, we can make this bigger and the board went for it and the school board went for it, too many boards here. And, uh, and, and next thing you know, the video board's out and, oh, we can't replace the parts. And, and so I'm just concerned that we spent another chunk of money on this thing and we got, you know, the saga of the Whitnall scoreboard, video board, point two, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And, and I know you, there's no guarantees, but, but, uh, I mean.
At least.
Stephen, when you say there's no risk, that's not exactly true.
Well, no, and, and I don't mean it that there's.
Let me, let me finish what I'm saying, you said there's no risk. I'm saying that's not exactly true because if we don't come up with the advertisers, our risk is the cash.
Well, we don't have the board, so we're done.
We don't get it.
We don't go with it at all.
We don't pay the money upfront until we have it.
You said something about in one year's time, if we don't have it, if we don't get the advertising in one year's time, then it's.
Then you don't get the board. So the contract is to fill the sponsorship. If you don't fill that sponsorship commitment, you don't get the board.
Oh, then they, so we do the sponsorship thing before they install it?
Right, so.
I didn't follow that.
Yeah, and they, and they give us training, some training to go along with that. So it's not like they say, here, go on your own. They actually have a program that goes along with that.
I'm not, uh, I may be the only one on the board, but I wasn't a fan of, of pumping more advertising at us and the kids and stuff because there's a lot of that, but, um, and then the one last thing I had was, um, I saw in the paper here, it talked about, uh, options for these animations and those animations and that system. That's great, but in this package, does that include the software for us or our students to create animations? Or do we have to pay them a fee to run this video file through them to, uh, or, or do we get 25 options of that?
So they provide canned certain amount of different things that we want.
I saw that.
And then from there, we are able to upload whatever we wanted with that. They give us the tools to do that.
So we'll have the conversion software and that kind of stuff?
Correct, so if we, if we wanted to take it to the point where we wanted to have live video and re-loop that back, we would be able to do that through them and they would show us how to do everything like that.
I'm thinking more of our students.
Well, correct, yeah, so our students would be.
Pay somebody a fee to make that happen.
Correct, right. Yep. Ultimately, the goal would be to have this student driven. That's the ultimate goal.
I think part of the comfort level that goes with this, it's not a local company, I believe it's from North Dakota, but they've, South Dakota, uh, Dakota. Um, they do have a lot of them in the state and a lot of them around the country. So it's not as though we're a one and done kind of thing or it's not a known corporation. It seems like they at least have a good name out there. So it's a little less worrisome that they're suddenly going to shut up their factory and leave.
They're a recently established, um, company. I'd say if you go around to a lot of gyms, you see their name and a lot of the different scoreboards and a lot of things. So it's not like, I don't know what company it was before.
It's like D3 or something, I, I don't know.
But it was, it wasn't as that established where we had that risk and it happened.
I, I understand, John. I, I brought it up to Daktronics, I said, listen, you see what's out there now. We, we are, what we're going to be concerned with is that this happens again and we have nobody accountable. So they went through their corporate structure, we, there's no subcontracting, they produce everything. We deal with Daktronics.
So they're the manufacturer?
Yes. Yes.
Karen?
Yeah, um, I see five options on this proposal and there's a range of prices. So it looks like the one that we're looking at is the, um, the most expensive option. Can you walk me through like how we got there?
Yep. Well, go ahead, Stephen.
Oh, I just. So we, we did go through, so a lot of it was like add-ons and things. So part of it is there were two video boards that they proposed putting on top of what our scoreboard was. They didn't really match up, they were different sized. And then the other part that we considered was again, the two different operating systems. You'd have to work them, they'd be two independent boards, not integrated and functioning within itself. The sound bar that they talk about is somewhere between 20 and 40, I don't remember. Forty-five thousand. So that was something that came up as something they could incorporate into any of these that we thought would be an enhancement for what we would like to use it for, that this was something that we didn't have good audio in the stadium and that we would be able to repurpose the audio that we have for other purposes around the school. So we didn't feel like we'd be losing out that way. And then looking at just the scoreboard as a whole, we thought, well, we could go ahead and look at this. We wanted to find out more about the energy use and if it would fit on our supports that we have. It looks like it would, that we don't have to change anything as far as that goes. So that's how we kind of settled on that one minus the indoor stuff that they had also added on to all of them if we wanted.
Okay, and so at this time, we don't have a plan for securing the sponsorship. It would be a, let's do this, let's try to secure the sponsorship. And whether or not we move forward hinges on whether or not we're able to provide full sponsor, full sponsorship or not.
Correct.
The plan though is part of what we'd be starting with Daktronics with to begin with. They're helping us with the plan and they're helping us to show us how we need to go about getting to sponsors and they provide that support for a certain amount of time. We take it and run with it. If we can't ultimately secure what we need to secure, then we wouldn't go through with the purchase.
Then my last question is, you know, so how does this effort align with our district mission, vision, et cetera?
I think that what we're trying to do with this is to basically fix something that we wish we had. We think it gives opportunities for a digital development kind of class to provide more opportunities for our students. I think it also enhances what is a great asset to our district to hopefully get us either, we have a lot of people wanting to use it and paying us rental fees for that that would enhance that opportunity for us, so financially we can do that. It's, and again, the added part that we looked, that at least appealed to me was kind of being able to use it for non, um, athletic things. Like if we wanted to have a movie night or something like that, you could have that and engage the whole community with it. So it kind of hits some things. Yes, absolutely, it's in the stadium, but it certainly, I think, enhances what has become something that is very much a piece of our district and something that has been helpful in us promoting our district and, uh, helping us maintain some financial responsibility.
And last question, do we think that there are income possibilities be after the payoff of the board?
So after the board's paid off, all the sponsorship, if continuing along that line, would come back into the district.
Do you have any estimate or projection of what that might be?
Well, if they're giving us, if they're saying that this board, they're showing us how to pay for a quarter of a million dollar board in five years, that would mean 50,000 a year if we continued that way.
Thanks.
John, you had something else?
Yeah, I just wondered, uh, for example, if we secure advertising from, and it's a hypothetical example, but from Holtz Motors, somebody who already does various things for the district and various groups and stuff like that, have we, had, had we considered or thought of the fact that? Have we, had, had we considered or thought of the fact that that may reduce? I mean, they're spending so much here on advertising, that may reduce, and I don't mean just them, but anybody that, that has this kind of relationship with us. They spend some money on that way, maybe they would reduce where they're spending in other ways towards the district. It's just a concern, but there's no way you can predict that, I'm just one of the ones that are concerned.
In, in, a lot of businesses, those come from different kind of funds and things, so your sponsorship is generally not part of your sales and things like that. So, there is that possibility for smaller businesses, but for some of the bigger things that we're looking at for this, it's probably not gonna be a real issue.
And, and the last, the last thing is, um, I, I see a lot of, I mean, I see a lot of various things here, descriptions and numbers, characters, all the- Pictures worth a thousand words, man. You know, if I can get mock-up pictures of what you're talking about?
Yeah, we do have pictures, I just don't have them.
Can you plug it in?
We can pass the computer.
Lisa, can you speak to, uh, the funds that possibly could come from the foundation?
Oh, that was to me.
It is. Uh, yeah, so, we've, um, to answer Quinn's question, um, we have, uh, there was a, a foundation that existed in the district for a while, and I've been, um, in contact with them. Some of you may remember that they helped purchase our mascot makeover. Um, and so, through our recent financial audit, we had to basically, um, look at those funds because they had that. And we, they have sort of looked at all the collective funds that they have remaining, which is in excess of twenty-five thousand. And so, my recommendation would be to take those funds to sort of jumpstart, um, this project right here. Because it is a community project, we wouldn't have to worry about how to divide it up between schools or whatever the purpose of that foundation was at that time. And it aligns with what their mission and vision was of creating that. Um, and so, that would be, um, my recommendation, once I saw a really large check sitting on my desk one day.
Which funds was that? Which, which funds were those?
The Whitnall Foundation that once existed, that has not really been in existence, and so-
The balance of that, I'm sorry.
About twenty-five thousand, yeah. So, that would be my recommendation, um, to sort of start this off.
Thank you.
What was, what was the charter of the Whitnall Foundation? What, what was the purpose of the Whitnall Foundation to describe, why did they raise the money?
Right, to provide, um, funds back to buildings to help them support activities. It wasn't like Scott, a lot of foundations, when you look at them, are for the purpose, I would say, the majority of them are to provide, like, scholarships and that. That was not the purpose of this, and they sort of stopped once the Booster Club sort of took over that piece of it, and then there was that block party, so.
So, I'm just concerned about putting all the eggs in one basket with another, um, like, the balance of that foundation going to the football field is kind of, it's like one shot and done, you know?
It is, it is from that standpoint, but right now, we sort of need that, that purpose, but yeah.
They have to liquidate.
Yeah, they do, they had to, so we're sitting here with that money, so without, um, and so, talking to a couple of the people who were on the board at the time and who had to go and liquidate the check, that was sort of where they, their efforts were at that time, were, um, toward things like that, but again, would, would-
Well, what had they spent money on? I mean, wrestling mats or, or, uh?
I was not here, it's been, it's been over fifteen years since they've been-
The last thing I can think of was, uh, the block party. They gave us, um, um, hundreds at ti- a couple of hundreds, uh, throughout the, every year, they would give us some money for, uh, for things. But that's the last thing I can remember that you-
You just said that they donated for Flash.
Yeah, so they were, the last, I mean, from there, but when they were active, it's been over fifteen years since they've been an active organization. But when I came, I found out they were and, and we thought that, because Flash has used it a lot at the schools and one of those community things in terms of that.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, just along the lines of what Jonathan is saying, is that I'm not sure why if our plan for this, um, scoreboard is to fundraise for it, why we would take the, you know, other monies and commingle it with the fundraising initiative, so I, I get what you're saying.
My suggestion at the committee was-
To be correct, that was John, not Jonathan, for the record?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, my comment at the committee meeting is that I would reach out to that group, because that's in terms of the communication, because I wanna stick with what their wishes are too, I don't wanna always speak on behalf of that group who fundraised a bulk of money. And I wanna make sure that their intentions would be served, because I, fifteen years ago, I don't know if anybody maybe meant to was around at that time in terms of what that group did or what they wanted, but, um, I would reference them as I did with the mascot request. I mean, ultimately, even though they had to liquidate their assets, I would still wanna go with their original intent of the efforts that those people, because they still are in our community, um, what their intent was, so.
Anything else? If you have questions, uh, please give them, uh, prior to, uh, two weeks, uh, we'll be voting on this.
Yeah, so, up on-
I'm making sure you saw the pictures.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Do you want me to explain the pictures at all, the differences? So, the, the far-right picture is what we are proposing, the entire scoreboard, um, from the very top, where you actually see the numbers of the score, uh, home and a guest, down would be all of video. And then the, the Whitnall at the very top, that small rectangle, that is actually all speaker. So, that is the sound, uh, that comes back at the actual field. The board directly to the left, right in the middle now, uh, that is the exact same board. The entire board is video, however, there is no speaker on the very top. So, the two boards are the exact same, except for one has sound, one does not.
Are those two separate boards stacked?
I'm sorry.
Are those two separate boards that are stacked, or is it one board whose functions are just dimmed out?
This is all one board, and there are different sections. Yeah, there are different sections that are, uh, you can have zones for different things. So, for example, where it says like anchor partner and the scoreboard, that would all be lit up. And you could turn, turn off those, so you would just see one big black section and-
I guess what I'm getting at is, um, can you use the whole thing from below Whitnall to below partner as one big video board? Or are those three different pieces?
You can use it as all one big video board.
So, from below, from above home to the bottom of partner is thirteen and a half feet, about twenty-five feet wide?
Twenty-five wide.
Twenty-five wide, yes.
So, I think that, I, I would look at it again, because the description was thirteen and a half feet by, or, or thirteen or thirteen and a half feet by twenty-five feet, which would mean just the part that you see as a video board there.
Dave, I don't think the top strip is video.
I don't think the top is video, or the, or the bottom is, can, can be incorporated into the middle. Because it still would be, that, those dimensions still wouldn't put the width at twenty-five feet, if that's thirteen feet.
Across is definitely twenty-five feet.
What's that?
Across is definitely twenty-five feet.
Yeah, I'm not disputing that.
The, the video board, the top piece is not video board.
I would agree.
It's not video board.
I was under the assumption that it was.
Right, it's not, it's def, it's, it's not, that's what, that's the piece, when we talk about video board and, and, and scoreboard being both Daktronics, that top part now is still Daktronics.
Yeah, but it's an add-on piece.
Correct.
That's what I'm getting at, because if it's thirteen and a half to twenty-five, the proportions are-
Anchor partner, though, I think that is video board, but I have to now double-check that you're asking that.
An option for it's-
It might not be, I mean, thirteen, it doesn't make-
An option for, it looks like just the live video display is thirteen feet, three inches high. The cabinet dimension for the ad panel above or below display is three feet high each. And the multi-sport scoreboard is four feet, six inches.
That's what I'm getting at.
Let me, let me look at-
So, it's gonna be closer to the twenty, twenty-five feet, when you add all the different sections together?
Yeah, but you can't use them all as one big, uh, picture.
No, I get it, I-
That's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure we're looking at the right-
Understood.
Looking at it properly is all.
I would say the bottom is not video board as well. If I'm looking at the Muskego, uh, board, I would say you're right, that the top and the bottom are add, if you wanna call whatever, add-on. The video board is-
They're separate pieces.
They're separate pieces.
Anything else? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Items for future consideration? Going, going, going. Number eight, announcements. I have announcement, I'd like to thank all the members that helped with the fifty-fifty raffle. We fundraised, uh, just shy of a thousand dollars, and that goes to all our kids, so that's a pretty awesome job.
Thank you, Mike.
And, I was there twice and I sold the winners twice, Kevin.
Sounds like there's some-
I'm not walking around with my people's names, I know my names now, I'm like, oh, yeah.
You gave me that little jab last time.
This ticket and that ticket, uh, yeah.
Any other announcements?
Yeah, um, so, there's an issue with Greenfield Plan Commission and with Greenfield City Council that may be of interest to community members, and that is the potential development of a large, um, senior living facility um, in some vacant land behind the middle school. The land is currently zoned as single-family. The Plan Commission was looking at whether or not to change it from single-family to zoning to like multi-something, you know, multi-residential, multipurpose, um, zoning. So, that went by Plan Commission last week, I haven't followed up to see what, how that went. But it will possibly go to a common council vote, it's something that people may be interested in.
How are they leaning?
Thank you.
I don't know.
Any other announcements? All right, motion to adjourn to close session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five-one C to discuss. A, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty superintendent salary, B, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty salary superintendent goals.
So, moved.
Second?
Second.
Karen?
Aye.
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 Kevin, aye.
Aye, so moved.